And we've talked this over, we, you know, and it's of no benefit to anyone but the landowners. So it's not, it's not going to affect anyone and we all agree and Mr. Hartline's the commissioner out there, he's went by, looked at it myself and I don't have a problem with it. So we, if we have anyone here that wants to talk about it in the audience, that's what we're here for, informal. Any questions? That's quiet. You know, normally that's usually the way this happens, but sometimes, you know, you do have, if it's a road that people are, you know, that are attached to or that they're used to using, you know, that's, there's, there can be some questions, but this is kind of a, you know, a no-brainer, I guess you might say. It's just a, and, y'all, we have some family here tonight, you want to say anything? I mean, as far as, you know, I know you came to me and, and explained to me, you know, what all has been happening there and it's just sad, you know, that, that it's went on this long, you know, how many sisters.
Yes, I'm, many of you knew, I'm Steve Hiller, which is Judson, Judson and Carley Hiller, where my parents, they passed away in 2020. And we've had trouble with the property, with people going in on it and taking things and vandalizing, but stealing things, and so we, we put cameras up, we've done a lot of things to try to prevent it, but to be honest, it hasn't stopped. And we're, it seems, this has been suggested to a, to people in a way to eliminate the threat to property reclaim, make it safer, secure, and, and like he said, there's no, there's no business on the road, there's no, all the property, all that road is completely, it's a dead end road, it is completely contained within our property, so looking forward to being able to do that if it's so lucky.
And there's a few of them, you know, in the county that back years and years ago, for whatever reason, they were more or less private driveways, I mean, it went nowhere but to a home and that was taken over back during the soul commiser days and, you know, once that, once that happened, they're county roads, I mean, they're, you know, we maintain them and there's not a lot of them left, but there, there's a few, we did, what was the one on Lookout we did, Don, just about five or six years?
Haygood.
Haygood Road, now there was a few people that lived on it that, other than the, the end of the road, the property on the end of the road, but they were all fine with it because the same thing was happening out there, it's a dead end road and it's not a real lengthy road, short road, but still, there's people coming in, out there all times of the night, there's all kind of paraphernalia, beer cans and all that, so, you know, they came to us and we did, we did, went through the same process and we, they actually put a gate up, you know, that's the optic, you know, it might be a private road, and it's just one less road for us to keep up, really, you know, maintain. Commissioners, you got anything you want to say, or Mr. Hartline, you're the commissioner out there, you got, I know you're, you're a-
No, I've been by there and look at it, I don't, I don't see any reason not to close it.
Yeah.
Then I'm going to put a gate up at the end and keep people out.
Exactly. Anyone else want to comment on the road, on the road closure or pulling B. filler? Okay. We're gonna, we'll let, let this kind of lay here, we're gonna be, we'll start our work session here in about six o'clock, so there may be some other people come in and if so, we'll let them speak, but right at six o'clock, we'll go right into our work session, so. Robert, now this, tonight, do we need to, this is a public hearing, but we need to vote on this, right?
Right, right, there's a resolution there.
We can, do we have to, we need to go ahead and have a one-on-one vote, or can we do it on the, put it on the consent agenda?
We can do it on consent agenda.
And that's, I noticed it on there, but I want to be sure that, you know, I think the other one we did, because there was other people involved, I think we voted on it, but that's, yeah, okay. But after that, it's, it's done, right? After that, okay. Y'all make yourself at home, you ain't got to be quiet like in the lunchroom at school, you know, y'all can go ahead and talk now, we get, and if anyone comes in, we can actually, we'll, we'll let them speak, you know. But then- Go ahead and, we'll go ahead and get started with our work session, if anyone wants to. Go ahead and get a seat, it's six o'clock.
Robert, would you let my dad have a seat?
No, Don changed me.
I did, no, I didn't.
I'm bringing the media. I'm going to bring up a splash, in our splash thing, I think I'm going to bring up some seats that don't shrink.
All right, we'll go ahead and Lamar, of course, he's not here now, he's actually had a funeral with ten up in, I think it was Washington.
West Virginia.
Virginia, yeah. But I hope y'all had time to look to agenda, any changes, correction you'll make, comment? Okay, all right. On our meeting, our minutes from our previous meeting, any corrections on it? About time for that, okay. Personnel status, kind of look that over, as always, kind of like over time, we got, Alex has got, I think he's got a new hire coming in that's not on here today, and then of course the, I think we've had one or two in the jail, you know, going in and out, but other than that, nothing drastic, nothing, you know, changed on that? Any questions on that? Okay. Okay, under number four, board of commissioners, proclamations, we have our Senator Jeff Mullis, we do have a proclamation, you know, he has really done a lot of good in Northwest Georgia, but he's really helped us in Dade County also, and, and we just feel the need to, you know, to actually, you know, commend him on all the work that he's done over the years. Anyone, anyone got any questions on that? I mean, it's just a, you know, it's a simple thing, but all, all counties kind of pooled together here in his region and they've actually did the same thing, and I think they're planning a, probably a gathering sometime in the near future to kind of honor him, so everybody fine with that?
Yes.
All right. We also have four B, this is a proclamation, the, the Intellectual Development, Develop- Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, what hard to say that fast. And this is something we've done, what, for the last, what, three years, four years, I think?
Long time.
Been a while, been a while, yeah, and it's just, it's something that's, you know, we feel the need to do and everybody on board with that?
Yes.
All right. Consent agenda, four C, the proclamation, Dade County Lions Club, this is Savior Vision Month, March the 23rd, we've been, we've been actually doing this for many, many years, you know, and the Lions Club is really a good, a good group of people, they do a lot of good in Dade County, we appreciate them, everyone fine with that?
Yes.
All right. This is four D, proclamation, this is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, March 20, 23, we've been, also, this has been, I know at least 10 years, we've, we've actually did this proclamation, any questions on it? Everybody fine with it? Okay. All right. Move down to four E, this is proclamation, social work, breaks, barriers, social worker month.
The aliens have laid it.
Ben, that didn't probably before.
Alex went back and worked on it.
Okay, we were on the, the four, four E, so everyone's fine with that?
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda, all right, let's move down to number five, this is our cap equipment purchase, if any.
I don't have any.
You don't have anything on that this month?
Believe it or not.
All right, I know, Robert.
It's only when Ted's gone.
Yeah, I know, Robert, that's right, I know, I know.
Oh, yeah, you're going to be chairman of the-
Move down to number six, this is our approval of a, of our ARPA expenditure, tonight, we have Dade County IT upgrade for Dade County Sheriff's Office, this is for the video evidence server and software upgrade. Alex, you want to go and give us a briefing on that, please?
Sorry, it's kind of hard to hear back there, I was trying to turn it up a little, so. As you know, we, Tommy presented, Major Bracker presented, we're, got a upgrade in the video cameras that's in the new cars, and we're running through this with the city as well, the city, the watch guard system we've been on for the last 10 years is, technology's changing as we're in, and the current server that we have at Sheriff's Office, we found out after we approved the camera for the new car, and we also ordered three for the city, and we tried to parallel this to keep pricing down, we've got to move to, up to a Windows Server 2019 or better, an SQL server of 2019 or better, and Microsoft SQL. We're on 2012 currently on the server that's got the watch guard system that we have for the Sheriff's Office, the hardware itself will not take the new operating system or the new SQL operating system. Currently, we've got nearly 30 terabytes of data that body cameras and the car cameras have on them, so the proposal is from our current vendor that we were working on some pricing from CDWG, but Lightfoot is our company that is our IT engineering that we've always used, and they also have a company they resell through, and this was their quote to us, we're still waiting on the CDWG pricing based on the criteria on the left, not the unit pricing. So the server, Windows Server 22, 16-core, SQL standard 22, we have to have five cow units of Server 22, the Synology Bay, which is the hard drives that holds the terabytes, and then we need, it's eight slots, so we're going to do eight 12-terabyte slots, the rail kit for the, putting it on the server rack, and then some of the Intel 10-gigabyte NIC card, which talks to the network that we need, so that total price is $14,096.10, they're, all the install will be done by us, this is just hardware and software, and this is our government rating software that we're getting the pricing on.
Did you, now, I know, another reason you went with this was no, no bids.
Well, we, usually with CDWG, we try to go between them and Lightfoot, and Microsoft is Microsoft, we're getting a same-take price on that, it's just the hardware, like the server itself with everything in it's $4,700, and then the standard pricing on the Windows Server 2022, SQL and clients, that's the thing, your, then your other biggest cost is the hard drives, the 12-terabyte hard drives are three, $453 times eight, which is $3,600 for that, then the rail kit and the NIC card, which talks to the network, so we have been on this system probably almost six and a half, seven years when we went to the watch guard, it's been through three upgrades of versions with watch guard, version two, three, and four, we're currently on four, and with the next technology, you're moving to a Microsoft Linux-based SQL, is what it's moving to, so that's different and we got to have the hardware to handle it.
Mr. Hartline, you have a question, any questions on that? Mr. Bracker.
So will, will your, when you transfer everything over, will the older stuff-
We're not transferring over because it's $600 a terabyte to transfer and we've got over 30.
So you're going to just replace?
We're going to put a new server in, leave the old one up and the-
And run.
And get them to pull any criminal, everything that they have for corpse and stuff, they've already pulled and burnt.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We will keep it up as long as we can, so it's not, and it's not on the world wide web, so it's not getting hit, it's just internally into that, yeah.
I understand.
So we're talking with Tommy, anything that they feel they need through investigations or officers will get pulled.
Yeah.
But the day we cut everything, the existing watch guard cameras, body cameras, and the one new one, will go on to the version five on the Linux base.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, yeah, so I didn't feel spending the data conversion.
Yeah.
Because it is too much.
Yeah.
And sometimes we run into problems and we don't get what we need, so it's sooner to just let the life of it run on out, and when Microsoft Server 12 is coming for end of life.
Yeah, that was my concern, yeah, yeah, I got you.
Hopefully, we've asked them to start pulling and saving, so if we got a, if it's saved, we can save that drive on our file server.
Sure.
And the player's still there, so we'll be okay.
Yeah.
Robert, you got anything, any questions, okay. All right, appreciate it.
Yes.
Let's go ahead and put that on consent agenda, all right. All right, number seven, this is our historic courthouse restoration project, Jamie Blevins, is Jamie here now?
I don't see him.
Okay.
He didn't, there is a report.
Okay, well, he'll be back in here next, next month then. All right, number eight, this is resolution R-15-23, this is the abandonment of a windy filler road as part of the Dade County Road System, any more discussion on that for their commission? Everybody fine with that then? All right, put that on the consent agenda, we got it, all right. Move down to number nine, resolution R-16-23, this is our GDOT Georgia Department of Transportation Grant, Section 5311, this is our public transit procurement policy update, and Don, you want to, yeah?
Annette's back there, if you want to show her, but it's a, well, I don't see her.
You want to come up here and talk to us about this, or you, or?
About the procurement?
I mean.
Well, this procurement is having to be revised and updated.
There's nothing you want to add then, I mean, that's, we, we, okay, to the people, we know kind of what's going on, but I didn't, well, you want to, that's fine.
So what it is, is Georgia Department of Transportation requires us to review it about every three years, we did review it, they had a brand-new policy, unfortunately, it went from our seven pages to 80 pages or something, it's ridiculous.
In the law.
I read it and it's horrible, and, but the big thing right now in ARPA, as far as that, as far as federal funds, is buy America, we got to make sure we are buying America first. It's big, and all, everything coming down the pipe, GDOT even now is getting a stickler on that, which is a great thing, I mean, there's no problem with that, it's just, you know, but sometimes you, things are like chips may be made in China, but the end product may be GMC or something, you know what I mean, it's just, that was the biggie though, that, that I read through, it's all that changed.
Then, you got any questions still, you know, man? Okay, all right, put that on consent agenda, if you're out with it, Mr. Bracker.
Yes.
All right, move down to number 10, this is our resolution R-17-23, this is our adjustment of our scale house rates and recycling center at the transfer station, Billy Massangill, come up, going to talk to us here a little bit, maybe not so much about the rates, but the recycling, but the rates, you know, let's, we had a meeting first of this, well, actually middle of the month, I guess he came, and then of course our, our rates are going up because, you know, our cost is going up with the people we deal, do business with, so, just a wash, go ahead, Billy.
I'd talk to y'all a minute about our recycling, for the past 15-plus year, we have bid, which is now Grice against West Rock, which used to be Rock 10, Grice is closing the doors, March the 25th will be no more in business, we got nobody to bid against to get the most, right now, newspaper brings zero, we don't get nothing out of it, cardboard $5 a ton, plastic a penny a pound, and I just need a little guidance, I mean, it's not looking good, I don't know how you want to go about it, but when you all-
What are you looking at, what are we losing a year, you thinking, what, I mean, pretty many, pretty close, as far as at, at the rate we're going, you know, it's going to wind out, we're going to be wind, we're probably, another year, we, we'll be paying people to take it, to take it, right? I mean, as far as cardboard goes and-
We will be, I mean, well, right now, it's costing approximately $92,000, about correct, a few hundred dollars off to run it.
Yeah.
Yep.
This is, can't get used to, we could get, I have seen it above $160 a ton, now it's only $5, load of cardboard, it don't run low $30 to upper $40, is what it's going to bring us, or it used to bring $1,000 or better, plastic used to be five to six cents a pound, one cent a pound, if we can get them to take it, we have been turning away from West Rock, now they're the only player, I mean, they ain't going to pay nothing for it, they're the only one in town.
What does it cost to take a load to them, a trailer load? I mean, you know, roughly?
$82, $77, $82, that's what it costs to get a load of haul.
We would be losing 50, 50, 60 dollars.
That's just on transit. That's just on transport now. Just transporting turn.
So just fuel?
Uh, that'd be fuel and labor to get it hauled up there.
No, no, no.
No worries.
There's no maintenance on the truck, no wire and tire. That is, if we got a pretty sunny day and the birds are chirping. I know you don't laugh about that. How many in here can go to Chattanooga and buy it without getting in traffic now? That's perfect timing, if we got no traffic now. Last load Johnny hauled off four hours, took him four hours, got caught in traffic. We can't come around the old road, can't get under the underpass. And I mean, you could, can come through while I had you, but you don't know that until you get hung in traffic. It's always, I wished I would have had. Man, it's not good.
Well, this is a discussion, Billy, I know it's been going on for a long time.
Yes.
Between me and you and probably you and some of the other commissioners and the chairman. You know, there was a place in Chattanooga a few years ago that would take our glass if we would pay them.
We used to donate.
Him to bring it and bring it to them.
We paid labor and all to keep it up and get it hauled up. We would donate it to them. It got to the point, they wanted us to pay them to take it.
Well, that's what's gonna happen with cardboard.
And it's thinking happens with plastic and all that.
And I know there's some that say, well, why don't we branch out further than Chattanooga? Then you're still taking it, you know, if, if there's somewhere to go and you.
Closest place now, go past Rocky Face, Walden Avenue, the next thing, then the one after it on the south part of Dalton. You don't double your haul bill to take it.
Are they paying any more for it then?
No, same company just closed it in town, Grice. They don't try to keep that open. This is not a Dade County problem. It's in North Georgia. This is all over. Out west, you're paying a thirty to forty dollars a ton to be able to donate your cardboard. Same way up north. And Dalton, close too. You're paying a ten to twenty dollars. Dalton, which everybody knows, carpet world, capital, the cores, the carpet come on, you all probably seen the fiber cardboard, and it's only seventy percent fiber. And they had to pay ten to twenty ton, ten, twenty dollar a ton just to be able to donate there. And it's coming to us.
Well, we had, you know, Monica Moadly with Republic was in here a few years, when China quit taking.
Yeah. It used to be China, they used to buy all the recycling or the majority from Chattanooga. Now they have quit. I mean, it's, it's not a pretty picture coming. I don't mean to be the bearer of bad news, but it ain't gonna be pretty.
Well, it's, it's not now. I mean, it's not, it's not pretty now. I mean.
No, it's not feasible right now to do it.
On a monthly basis, how many ton of, how many ton do you haul off roughly in recycling? All together, all of them?
Yeah, I give you the number, you know, but cardboard, maybe two and a half containers. Each container will run anywhere from six ton to maybe nine, so you can figure it, maybe seven and a half, eight ton times two and a half. Then on plastic, plastic, we don't get maybe one and a half, which load of plastic right now bring twenty, twenty something dollar, still cost seventy-seven to haul it off. But then on plastic, and there's no rhyme or reason on how much comes in. You might go down there today, you can't see it's much come in. But plastic, we usually haul one, one and a half load.
Hundred and break it down.
I think Don might have a sheet on all that telling load for Rebecca.
We can get, we can get it too. Come in for us next week, you know, we can pull it and save it.
Yeah, we, we have, we, we've got the number, I mean, we've been working on all the numbers.
We will.
We've had it. This is not the first time it's, you know, come up, so we're, we're really trying to work.
You're trying to figure it out, Phil, I know.
What I'm seeing is it's, if we quit spending the seventy-six hundred and quit taking in the recycling and put it in our trailers and haul it off, we're gonna, we're gonna save, it's gonna cost us about eight hundred dollars a month, which is costing us seventy-six hundred dollars to recycle.
Yeah, you're big loss. But on the other hand.
On that though, you're still, if you're just taking it back and putting it in there, you're still, those fees are still, there's still some backend fees that you're coming across.
What, what you're saying.
Not that simple.
What you're saying, most of our cardboard right now is coming from bidding. Used to all you bid, this, the majority of them had a bailer. They bailed it yourself, they made the money. There's no money be made. Guess what they're doing to our cardboard? We're losing money, let's give it to Dade County. They bringing it to us because they can't get nothing out of it.
That's the problem.
Um, no Hudson Ward, they used, not Hudson Ward, but, uh,
I didn't.
Yeah, IWG one and also, uh,
What's the next name?
Bull Moose. They used to set it out, people, I guess y'all remember Mama Duke, how you go, people come by down there, this is just up to lately, they'd take rope, they'd stagger down, they'd man it up and haul it off. They won't come get it. Now they haven't paid BFI to take the cardboard off. But if we started charging businesses that bring it in, which they bring in the majority of your cardboard, if they come in and paid across the scale, we wouldn't be losing money on the cardboard.
Well, that's easy to fix.
Yeah, that's what I was.
That's, that's what we, that's what, we appreciate you telling us this, but we got, we're gonna have to do that. I mean, it's because you, we're getting it not only from Dade County, they're bringing it in from other places because we take it for nothing. And it's costing us a hundred thousand a year of our taxpayer's money. I mean.
Well, on the average, in the past, we've, what did, low twenty we've made, but it costs ninety-six to do it.
Thirty-four is the maximum, but tw- twenties is the twenty-two, twenty-five.
This was back when they were bringing a hundred, fifty, a hundred, we used to get thousand, twelve hundred dollars out of newspaper.
Yep.
Now we get zero out of it, if they take it. Now, I don't know if West Rock's gonna take it. I don't believe me, but one option with it, I mean, which it is by all means.
Well, we have, we have to too, we have to come with a happy medium. It is a service that we offer, so we have to have some type of a, a okay balance middle part. So whether it's charging, figuring out that, what that fee would be to charge, you know, making sure that that goes, that charge and that they go to the recycling and it goes to where it needs to go. We've got to come up with a, a middle place where we're not losing out as much as we are.
Man, it's not a pretty picture. I, I don't know the answer, that's.
Well, appreciate you. Appreciate you, you know, bring that to us and we'll, we'll, we'll act accordingly.
Now, this resolution though is still passing on the fee that we just got paid.
Yes. This is, yeah, this is something we need to.
Now, you could add the commercial, a commercial fee.
I think we need to come up with that number, but I thought, I don't, I don't think a commissioner would have a problem with, we gotta do something. I mean, it's not right to do.
You can't spend three dollars to make wood.
Yeah.
Three dollars to lose.
And my suggestion would be that it would definitely be under what, what the tons or pounds right now going across the scale, so it is considered recycling. Because if you go over that amount, then they're just going to.
County residents are subsidizing local businesses to dispose of their cardboard.
That's right.
That's what we're doing.
We're paying, that's right, we're paying the bill.
The property taxes, subsidizing.
That's not, that's not, yeah.
Yeah.
But we'll go ahead on, as we have it here and on the adjustment scale house, and we'll do some serious, you know, numbers between now and next month, we'll have, we, we, we need to, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, we'll have everything in order, so is everybody fine with this resolution R dash seventeen dash twenty-three on the scales?
Well, I'm not fine with it, but.
Yeah, but what you did.
Well, we've got, it's a business, it's a business decision for the county, just like everybody else, and you can't continue to lose the money that we're losing on that. And I appreciate people, I know people have different passions. I appreciate people who are big, but I don't like those people. I mean, we've got to educate them that, like Billy said there, if you, and what Phillip has put in, you're spending three dollars to make one dollar.
Yeah.
You're going in the hole every, every day.
I agree. I'm talking about with the, the pounds going across going up, but that's just the way it goes right now.
It's only cardboard though, that's not the glass and the plastic and everything else. It's, we're still making nothing on any recycling and we knew that was coming when Monica came and we talked about China was gonna stop taking it. We knew this would come and it's been about three years in the making, so.
Okay. All right. Y'all got anything else you want to add to the, the book session? If not, we got two different people wants to talk to us tonight. Mr. Faircloth here, he want to talk to us. I've got, you want to come on up here? This lady called me and want to be on our book session, come up on the mountain here. She's got just a little issue she wants to talk to us about and bring it before, bring it to our attention and tell us who you are and, and where you, where you live.
Okay. My name's Cindy Dentsey and I live in Wildwood.
Okay.
Um, I just have two concerns. The first one is the safety of my grandchildren when they come to visit. I'm scared. Um, the neighbor's dog has been very menacing to my grandchildren on three occasions because every time I mentioned it, anyone.
They cut this a little bit loud.
You're gonna have to speak up in, in the mic because I'm having a hard time hearing you and other people on the.
Everyone I spoke to said, there's no leash law, there's nothing that can be done. And so I didn't do anything, but then after the second time I was ready for the dogs, the third time I had pepper spray. So sure enough, he came acting menacingly, tried to nip one of them the first time, but this time I thought, mm, I'm gonna make sure that they don't. So I sprayed it. Well, the neighbor daughter came up the driveway and said, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and grabbed the dog and took it off. I said, thank you. I don't know why he does that to children. I've never had a problem with a dog. But anyway, so I thought that was my only recourse. Well, went and told her thank you for putting the dog up because I had the grandkids for six days. She slammed the door in my face. So now we've got Hatfields and McCoys going on and kinda, it's bad because there's other issues. But the dogs are also a nuisance because they run free. They are making trails in the woods up behind my house, which is causing some erosion, which can cause washing, blah, 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 et cetera. And, I mean, if there isn't a leash law, then they don't have to fence in their yard and keep their dogs up. But you did tell me that if I call you guys.
We have a vicious dog owner as hell. And we enforce strictly.
I mean, he's never bit any of us.
They, they just have to show aggression and then.
It sounds like he's nipped.
Well, he nipped at him and I grabbed my grandson. And the neighbor, the owner of the dog was standing there at the time, she said, I don't know why he does that. And I said, well, I don't either. Well, that was the very first incident, then the other incident, he chased my granddaughter into the house, barking menacingly.
On your property?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And so then the third time I had the pepper spray and I ushered my grandkids into a little storage building that I had open. So they're angry. And the thing is, even if they come out, will they take the dog if the incident is over and done and the only person that saw it?
They'll make a report, uh, uh, they'll interview you and then they'll go to the dog owner and they'll, they'll make that determination that, when I say they, the deputy, the, the law enforcement people. And normally, yes, if they, they'll, they'll take the dog and, and they'll keep it.
I mean, because it just seems like.
They will actually, uh, and if the owner gets the dog back, of course, the, the questions will be if it, if it's had rabies shot, they'll do an investigation and, and if the owner does get the dog back, then they're required to keep that dog. If it happens again, if the dog's gone, I mean.
Okay.
So, no, it's serious. I mean, because we have it, we have calls, you know, quite a bit about it, but as far as the leash law is concerned, it's been talked about over the years, you know, and this, and, and we're still, you know, very rural in this county, you know, and it's, uh, to get to, you know, you mentioned the petition, you know, and that's something you could do. You could go out and just see how many people you're gonna get to sign it, but you'll be surprised how many people that won't because there's so many people got cattle dogs, they got dogs, you know, hunting dogs, but it, it's something, you know, if you want to do that, we'd be glad to look at it, you know?
Okay. Well, my point is, people don't let their cows walk and poop in your yard where you have to step in it and mow, you know? I mean, let's just be realistic. Other animals are kept up. And I know people consider cats and dogs pets and that's not livestock, but my other issue is if they are dumping construction material on their property, and I have to see it when I'm in my woods, it's unsightly, number one, and number two, it can decrease my property values and.
The answer to that is, no, the, you know, if, if that construction debris comes off of their property or their household garbage, as state of Georgia, and this is a state, different states are different, they can bury it on their property. They can, they can put it on their property, but if it, if they bring anything from outside, you know, they're violating violation of a Georgia statute.
Well, it's, it's been like, they have a construction company, they run out of their home and they brought the deconstructive material and put it there, like lumber and brick and, and concrete.
Did it come out of their house or did it come out?
No, no.
So it came off site?
Off their trailer.
No, I can, you call me, I can, I can handle that. I've got a.
And the, the only thing I was concerned, I knew what they were doing, they're trying to raise their property up from that bank so they have more parking because we've had parking issues.
Well, see, they can do that with the right material, that's not a problem, but if you're talking about construction, they have the solid waste division of EPD and, and we deal with him. I've dealt with him three times this week on some stuff that's happening and you can't do that. And, and that's a state violation, that's not a county, that's a state.
Well, their plan is they're going to put, but it's been there for over a year. And they did have a couple of mattresses out there for several months, but they've hauled those off. And their, their plan is to put chert and red clay over the top of it so it'll pack down all that debris.
If you'll get, get with me tomorrow, I can, I can just get a physical address on it, we can, I can start that process and they'll come, I'll come up next week and evaluate, evaluate it and, and it, because it doesn't matter if it's brought, you, you know, you, you can fill your own property, as long as you, as long as it's dirt and even concrete and stuff, you know, as long as it's approved, but, you know, when you take construction debris, it's not, you can't do that.
You can't even take a tree. Once a tree leaves a property, it goes on a highway, it cannot go back on somebody else's property, it has to go to the transfer station.
Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate you coming, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Faircloth, you want to talk to us tonight?
I'm sorry, and I didn't, I'm not overlooking you, you, you're Ms. Faircloth to me, but, you know. You're the little sister.
Chris, yeah.
Rock y'all. Lamar told me to make the presentation, so.
He, he didn't know, he was kind of, it's a family thing, emergency there, he had to believe and.
Yeah. That's what we're wanting to build, Tim Wildwood, Carol Road, or did I give you one? A wine venue, not a wine, not a wine vineyard, but a wine venue. If that makes sense, we do wine tastings and you, you can sip the wine, drink the wine and also purchase a bottle of wine. Plus we'll have food too.
And you're, you're going through the alcohol, I mean, I know you.
Yeah, I, I put in an application over there. I kind of got ahead of myself. I was supposed to have the soil test back and the guy did not show up last week, so I'm kind of waiting on that to see if I can even get approved for septic and all that. I know the soil's good, but I don't know how much.
Yeah, it's a problem all over.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, if it's not, I have another location that I'm working with a guy that can possibly build there. It's still in Wildwood also.
Any questions, Hartline?
You said on Carol Road?
Carol Road, yep.
What is, as far as foods, what kind of foods are you talking about?
Food, well, it's still kind of up, like we were talking earlier. I've got a guy, St. John's, Josh Carter. He's got me a chef to, because I don't want to own a restaurant. He's, so wine is like a big deal, you know, and so they do food and wine pairings. So he's working with this, or he's got me a chef that will put together a menu that will pair with wines. And I don't know what that is yet though.
You going to do the craft beer as well?
Yeah, the craft beer, we thought we'd add that also because, you know, sometimes you go out with your lady friend or your wife or girlfriend, boyfriend, whatever. And some people don't like wine. So, you know, we thought we'd have a few craft beers.
You want, you're going to want, just sell wine, bottles of wine or craft beer as well?
Ju, well, the craft beer is just for onsite consumption. Yeah, the bottles of wine is so you can take home, but you also can drink it, consume it there too.
And this is actually, you know, he's, he's given us to us for information. You know, his process, he's already started a process as far as, you know, that's, that's our alcohol board. You know, they do that, they go through the process, they look at everything. And then they'll come back and they'll, they'll recommend or not recommend or whatever. We'll have another night with them here to, you know, I guess, make the final, you know, I mean, when it comes down to it. But it's good to come, you know, to, you know, upfront and show us kind of what you're doing.
Yeah, well, I just want to show you that, you know, it's not going to be nothing cheap. It's going to be a really nice establishment. And I wanted to showcase a lot of the history that we have here. Like I've talked to you in your office and some of the stuff.
Yeah, lots of pictures.
You know, some of the stuff's really cool we have here. And I like to showcase that as art on the walls.
Yep. Ms. Bradford, you got some, any questions?
I think it sounds great. I, I hope that it goes through, the process goes well for you and...
Well, one thing, we, we went on a wine tour last Friday in Georgia. And Georgia, actually, they have this, let's see, it's called a passport, wine passport. So the state of Georgia, or not through the state, but it's a 501(c)(3). And they have over forty wineries on their list and you go get them stamped, just like a passport. And we could be added to this list for, you know, not as a vineyard, but a wine tasting establishment.
Well, that's cool.
Mr. Goff, you got anything?
No.
Okay. Appreciate you, you know, coming, bringing us to this and...
Any questions, let me know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm excited to see how the process goes because I was kind of a part about that earlier. So, so keep me informed on how that process goes. The beer board side, yeah, yeah.
You'll be, your main interest is going to be, it's going to be off Carol Road. Is that what you said?
Yeah. So, yeah, our property, it meets Highway 11, but the entrance is on Carol. And we do have those crossing arms. I know it's a railroad out there, but we do have the crossing arms.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's on down further.
Yeah. You got anything else, Mr. Hartland? Anything you want to bring from? All right. You got anything? Anybody? I'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and we'll adjourn our work session here for maybe five minutes or so. And then we'll come back and go into our regular. But you didn't have anything else, Robin?
No.
So let's go ahead and we'll move on here in just a minute. Okay? Appreciate everyone being here and staying through the work session. Robert, as always, if you would, ask you to maybe, ladies sing prayer and also the pledge of allegiance. Everyone would stand.
Chairman Rumbly mentioned in our work session, let's remember Lamar, Kathy and the rest of the family. They're traveling in some bad weather. They probably are there now because Virginia, West Virginia, it's a death in families. So keep that on your hearts. Also pray for safety for people tonight because we're, we're not out of the weather yet ourselves, but the Lord knows. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for protection us, protecting us in so many ways and so many times. Many of those times, we didn't even realize that your hand was there. Lord, we do pray that you would be with Lamar and Kathy and as they travel, keep them safe and bring them back safely. We pray that you would keep the people of our county, the area and our, and our nation safe tonight, Lord, with the storms that are happening all over. And we just pray, Lord, that you would bless our meeting here tonight as you already have and the work that we're doing, Lord, to better our community. And we just pray that you would give us the hearts and the minds to do it and to do what's best for the people. Again, we thank you for where we live and all that we have, in the name of Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this is a regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners in the state's place at the same time. On the first Thursday of every month, proper notice, this meeting was given to our legal origin. It's also posted in our hallway. At this time, I do need a roll call. Mr. Lowery is absent. Mr. Hartland?
Here.
Mr. Goff?
Here.
Ms. Bradford?
Here.
And Chair's present, please have a call. All right, Mr. Hartland, I'll start with you on your committee report, if you want.
All right, for last month, we had sixteen electrical inspections. At the sports complex, we've got baseball signups and soccer signups going on. The middle school has started practicing baseball and has played a couple of games already, three games. We have surprised them with them being able to play with the amount of rain that we've had. Four year ago, with the rain we've had, they wouldn't have been playing at all. But they, up until now, they've not been able to practice because of the rain we just had. March the 11th, the day, we have a Dade County Rec Association now that formed the other, the other night. They're having a yard sale at the sports complex on March the 11th to, for a fundraiser for the association. We have got the storm shelter open now at the sports complex and the one at Davis is open. The, I don't think, at Davis, I don't think the air conditioner is wired up to run to, at this time, they'll have it ready probably next week. But for tomorrow, if we have storms, you can get into them two storm shelters.
And South Dade.
And South Dade is open, it's been open, so. And that's all I have.
All right. Anyone want to come up and talk to us tonight? I've got my, my glasses, I left my real glasses and these things, I look like I'm upside down. But, but anyway, does anyone want to come up? We welcome you to come up and talk to us tonight about anything, whether going on now or whatever. Okay. All right, if not, Mr. Goff?
All right, I usually start off by reporting on the sploshed. And sploshed was down a little from last month and reflection of February goes back a couple of months. It's 265,498, which is still great compared to what it was for so many years. So we're thankful for that. We'd like to give a shout out tonight to some of our young people in our high school, especially. One young man, if you looked at the paper, his name is Landem Williams. Won his second state championship wrestling tournament this year for Dade County High Schools. And so our hats off for all those kids that Philip has mentioned already started in a lot of the sports that are going on now. So it's, it's good to see the kids active. And also, I don't know all the names. If you saw it, I think it might have been on the paper or on social media. A lot of our, I guess, band and musical people from our school also attended as well. So, you know, it's just good to hear that kind of stuff because you can hear anything bad that happens before it even gets through happening. But when something good, and our kids are doing a great job over there. And I know a lot of people work with them outside the school system for once, for one, our UGA system, our agent over there as well. So also, I reported last month on a bill that was very interesting to a lot of the state and especially, you know, every county. ACCG is tracking right now, I think, 229 bills and the session's not nearly over yet. So that gives you an idea of how many bills. And that's just the ones that they're tracking. And, but the one that I talked about was the truck weight limit. It was, it's been in and out of committee, in and out of committee. I did talk with ACCG today. It was, may be being talked about as we speak here with more amendments to it. So what they're doing is trying to hack it down till they will go back out. And the legislators say it's okay, but it looks like right now what they're asking is for an 88,000 pound limit on maybe the trucks. So when you look at that on our highways, on, on our county roads, city streets, state don't want them on theirs, but they, you know, they want them on ours. So it is affecting, it's been opposed all over the state by a lot of different people. So we don't know how that one's going to go. But that's one that affects the whole state, whereas some bills may affect a portion of the state. And I close that by saying, we'll pray for the good old folks over in Catoosa County the other night because they've got to deal with things like how many chickens you can have in your backyard. So it's, it's, it's kind of laughable when you're in a county without zoning and you hear stuff like that. So they're trying to get them down to six chickens, but they're... So they're trying to get them down to six chickens, but they're beginning to rethink that because eggs are getting pretty high. But that's kind of thing sometimes you go through when you sit in these seats in a lot of places as well as here. But I just thought that kind of funny when we don't have zoning and they're talking about you can have six chickens, but, but no more, but that may change. So that's all mine, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Bradford.
Well, I wanted to start off saying, we were, Robert and I were kind of talking, you know, we report on these different departments. But anybody's welcome to call and talk to us about any department. We might know a little more information on these ones that we report on, but we're over the whole county, so please don't ever feel like you can't reach out to us. I'll start with, I have 180 work orders for February and mainly road clearing, ditch clearing, some entry, like new entryways. What is that exactly called, Ted?
Driveway permission.
Yeah, like a driveway, like actually making, making a driveway, it's a certain name.
It's a, it's just an entrance.
Entrance.
Entrance, you know, tile, that's, that's.
Not the tile part, but the, like, saying it's okay to have a driveway there.
We don't have, we don't do a power meeting on, on that.
No, and it's just a.
They come in and actually do the.
So I guess it's the tile.
We'll furnish the tile if they pay for it, and then we'll furnish the rock and the chirk, chirk to go in.
Okay, that's probably what he meant.
It's actually an entrance, yeah.
Okay, that's what he meant then. All right, and then we'll start with the, the Dade County Senior Center. We have some slides going.
I might add, Ms. Bradford now is actually going to be kind of the liaison now, as far as the commissioner, with our seniors and actually our transportation, senior transportation. So she, she's kind of taking that on and she'll be giving a report, you know, every, every month. And so that's, that's a good thing, you know, so that's what, that's what we're wanting to right now, yeah. I, I mean, I know you said it, we're going to say that, but I just wanted, you know, because it's, it's new and it's good.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I've just been trying to reach out to not only, you know, the transfer station, but other departments. And I know there's like some really good things that go on, like, like Robert says, and, and I think a lot of times it's kind of just overlooked. So I just want to make sure that everybody's trying to get covered and, and there's some great things, like what they, what they offer, the senior center offers. And it looks like they had a good fun February. And then they have some, you know, on the side there, there's some thanks to some people which make all that happen, so it's pretty awesome. And then the bills for wheels, which is within, it's a, it's not with Dade County, but it's in, in the senior center. And they did 1849 mills, I mean, that's just, that's awesome. And then the Dade County Transportation plus their numbers for, for February. And then, let me pull that one up in front of me. I mean, that, these numbers are just, I feel like, just really awesome. You know, the total trips confirmed, 680. And then it tells, you know, the different types of transportation that they're giving in those numbers up there. I just, I, I think it's really, really awesome, so, and that's all I got.
Okay, good report. On, you know, thi- this month's been, you blink an eye and a month's gone by, it seems like, but we're back to having issues again. And I know it's been on the news a lot, our rail carriers, CSX, Norfolk Southern, but in fact, there was a group of people supposed to be there tonight and they didn't. The weather, I'm sure, has kept them from up at the north end, but they're back to blocking these crossings, north of Trenton especially. Now, we get it some in the south, but especially up on Steel Road. And I was, I was actually on the phone a lot of the day Saturday and, you know, they, they were blocked up there for around four hours, you know, and people couldn't get in, couldn't get out, you know, and it's just. Anyway, we have got federal people, you know, working on this, and I want them to know that we, you know, we don't take this lightly. Week before last, I was with CSX over there on the 299 corridor there, and same thing, we had people over there that hadn't slept in their car, couldn't get home. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a problem, it's a problem in Chattanooga, it's a problem everywhere, I guess, but Chattanooga's got their, their feel of it too, out in, in the northern part of Chattanooga. And you've probably seen it on the six o'clock news, not to mention the train crossings where we've had accidents, you know. I mean, we had another one in Ringo there hit day before yesterday. And so I just want them to know that, you know, we, this is something we're working, I'm working on heavily. So we've got, had a lot of issues, had a lot, over the, this month complained, complaining about the, and, and this is kind of out, it's out of our power, but we do have the numbers to call. But on the interstate, if you've been from Trenton and hit the interstate here going to Chattanooga, how rough the interstate's got, it's really bad. We've actually got, they've been, we do have a paving crew here and there from the state, they've been up there last week working. They're going to work another week, maybe two weeks according to the weather lets them. And they're trying to finish fixing all the worst spots on 59 between Interstate and 24, where it goes into Tennessee. They did fix that real bad place up on the bridge there before you get to the Tennessee line. They're also, when they're going to pull out, I got confirm, confirmation from Grant Walter, which is our area engineer. And what that means is, he's, he's actually in charge of, of ten counties, which Dade County is one of them. And he calls the shots on actually, or you know what happens as far as roads and directs the crews. And they are going to pull off on 11 and actually fix, we've got several bridges on US 11 that are really bad. We had a, I stopped to help a lady fix the tire, put her spare on Monday morning, she burst the tire there at the Allison Creek Bridge. And so that's happening, I mean, there, as soon as they pull the state paving off, they're coming over on 11. So that, want everybody to know that's, that, that's, that's, because it's been going on for months. We, we reported this months and months ago, and they just kept getting worse and worse, and they, it's just, it's, it's, it's dangerous, you know. I want to get Alex up here tonight. We've got this, I want y'all to listen now what's going on, what's happening, because this is Alex, our EMA director, and what's, what we got, maybe possibly coming in, in the morning or tomorrow. That's why we've really been pushing these storm shelters, getting everything kind of ready. He's going to tell you what's going to be open, what, you know, what, like here and all, and I'll just turn it over to you, Alex, and, you know, just to.
Well, as, as exciting as it is, and, and Commissioner Hartline talked about, he's, him and you and Robert and Melissa have been really good to help us. And we've done a lot of this work on ourself, Billy Massengill and his crew helping us. And then some of my, the two deputy EMA directors, which is Chief Kaiser and Chief Ansel Smith, have really been involved, but they're also, while the merchant management. All three of our shelters will be open tomorrow, from what we've been working on hard today. We done it, Stacy Stevens and his crew, Jared and them done a lot of work today to finish that up. We got some temporary measures in on power and water at Davis. Temporary power for Davis, it's laid conduit on the ground, and temporary water laid on the ground tied into a, be able to get water at sports complex, as we mentioned. We're just waiting on contractors come to do final tie-ins due to weather. So hopefully, if it don't look like next week, might be too good, but we're going to try. So we just kind of decided to make some things, talked to Phillip and Commissioner Hartline and Commissioner Rumbly yesterday to make these measures and move for us. So I appreciate all that, and hopefully, a little bit more sidewalk work at Davis for the ADA accessibility, but we've got a good plan for that. We got material we used at South Dade that we will take back up there. We form it up, gravel it up, and one of our local contractors comes in and helps us do the concrete. So it's been a team effort to save as much money as we can, as we know that we went way over budget due to 2016 pricing and being awarded 15. And then 20 and 21 COVID hit us, and so we decided to do a lot of in-house, which is taking longer. And I think we ought to schedule community meetings and kickoff's and open house to let people see what, what our federal funding has done and what splotched has allowed us to do. It's going to be a lot of things that we're very proud of to offer help. And I think even last night at South Dade, we had seven or eight folks come up when the tornado watches finally hit us. And that's some of the criteria we'll be talking about. And we, if you're interested in helping and being a member of that community and want to be part of our shelter group, one of the things that is our voat, our voat, but the Dade County hub. Mike Keen called me today, he's calling his churches when they get in and after a while, once we hear back from him, we'll be posting it on our Facebook and Twitter of what community churches are going to be opening to help during this, when we talk about our storms. So we're very proud of that, and we're getting things together. Aneta talked to me today about some stuff, and I've got some extra chairs, it's in the way at senior building that we're going to get moved out. So we're looking at all resources of the county that's overflowed or used, that we can have things, and some of the tables at the library that got replaced when this past year, we took those tables and used them at South Dade. So we're trying to use what we got and make it comfortable and accessibility. But weather tonight, you know, what we seen last night and moving in tomorrow, we are moving to what we're seeing from the weather forecast. From Huntsville and Peachtree, we had conferences or today or calls about from Huntsville and North Peachtree City. We are in a slight risk of some quick moving weather tomorrow during 11 and 1. Was also on the phone with Josh Ingle, with superintendent, to decide what some things we could do and worried about our kids. You know, getting them to school, we feel comfortable during the day from 11 to 2 is also our lunchtime at schools. So they're making some alternatives for maybe making lunch a little quicker or brown bagging in the classrooms. And if we have to get into the hallways during this time, and we done this about a month ago, when we also had that last round of storms come in and hit. So we're always ahead with the schools, Josh and Jeremy are up to date, and we keep it, as you see the emails that I send y'all each time when we get this. But a slight, we're in a number two slight risk, which is a short-lived and not a widespread, isolated intense storms. And last night, Patrick Corr called me, we were talking about it, and we feel it's a 30 or 40 minute quick moving storm, but there's going to be a lot of wind. It's going to be very windy tomorrow, and we know how much rain we've got today. We've been out walling in it all day with this electrical and, and it is wet and it is saturated, and you look at the ditches, they're full. We're worried about trees, we're worried about roads, and we're worried about power, but that's always our threat in the storms that we do. We, we're going to turn up the ELC tomorrow just to be monitored and working with the schools. We start watching weather as it moves from over to us, but up above and north of us is going to be a little bit heavier. So schools decided we're still going to roll, we're just going to isolate, we feel the kids are safer in the buildings that we have than at home, and it's hard for childcare. And that's one of the things they think about. But, you know, pay attention, we'll be updating through Facebook and Twitter and our local news forecast. And we will have all three shelters open probably by nine o'clock in the morning. And if you feel the need to go, please be there, they're there, we'll have chairs and tables and, you know, bring stuff that you need to take care of yourself. And we'll have more information on that, but please follow us on our Facebook and Twitter, as updates will be given, live updates as we go. But, you know, it's starting early this year, April's usually a big year for us, and here we are on the first of March and seeing things like this. But Huntsville mentioned to us today that the last wind advisories and hazardous winds like this, it's, it's more scary as these quick bursts of storms than what we usually see right now. So just be prepared, you know, always know what's going on, and we'll be here to take care of that.
He said that the cabin and Jackson.
Cabin and Jackson has already closed, some other schools up north have closed, I believe Hamilton may have as well. So we are, you know, that was a thing that Josh, now, if he changes his mind, he hasn't texted me as of yet, I forgot to look. But unless he, they change their mind, you know, they've got their system that will go out and let the folks know. And a lot of times we, you know, we're, 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 been a few days on this, and we forward this out to all emergency services, the sheriff's office.
Are we still on the old move and the heads, the head start?
Head start is not there tomorrow, just the teachers will be there, and we're going to get them out a little bit earlier than what they need. And what seniors we have, me and Annette talked today, to let them know if they want to come over, they can.
Yeah.
But they've got a great interior room that we've used for years, so. That's where we are, stay tuned, we'll be keeping things up to date, our Facebook, our website here at Dade County and all that, so it's just, everybody be prepared. If you've got any questions, call.
Good report, we appreciate it. All right. Commissioner, you got any questions for Alex over here, I mean.
Nope, thank you for watching.
I know you deal, you deal with him every day, but, yeah. All right, let's move down here.
Okay, if I got, Carrie, can you pull back up to the part I left out on my? Which part did you? The reg, the girls softball tournament. So we do, I forgot to tell you all this earlier, we've got a, we've got five softball tournaments scheduled for this year. We had two last year, so we're hoping to get, if we get four, we'll be tickled. But there's the dates on that site there, if you want to scroll up some. We've actually, on Stacy's, on our website, you've got the date, the middle school baseball schedule here. So if you want to watch games, you can go to that, and if you're going down, co-ed softball, slow pitch softball signups, they're going to be starting soon. And then when I mentioned the Dade County Rec Association, that has nothing to do with the county. That is, each sport, excluding, I think, wrestling and football, they got together, the, the coaches and the people that's over them sports, and decided to put this rec association together. It has nothing to do with us, but they've got their website, and then you can go to it now, and they're getting it to where you can see any signups for any of the sports, when they're coming and the events that they're having. So you'll, through that page, you'll have one page you can go to and see the fees and all that. Now I'm done.
Okay, all right. All right, let's move down, Ms. Mindy. Come on in, with our Dade County Public Library. He is our manager.
Well, as I mentioned to a few people, I try, I was thinking about sliding in a slide of my grand, brand new grandbaby that we just had.
Oh, really?
Yes, brand new, he's three weeks old, and they're living with me right now, they're living with us, while my daughter lives in Barbados, but still waiting on that green card for her husband, but. So we have a little newborn living in the house with us, but I didn't put a slide on that, even though he's really cute. Just wanted to go over some of our statistics at the library. Once again, we surpassed 2,000 in our door count for the month of February, so that's two months in a row that we've just really seen a lot of folks coming in our doors. I broke down our circulations this month because I thought it was quite interesting to see what books are circulating in the library. We had a total of over 3,400 circulations. I didn't include the, the DVDs and things like that, but I broke down on books, what we were circulating, 1,200 children's books, 687 juvenile books. And we categorized juvenile as basically second grade through eighth grade, so elementary through middle school. 159 YA, that's our teen section, and 943 adult. So we're seeing a lot of books moving in and out of the library, and that's really good. 274, oh, computer usages, 844 prints, that's a lot of printing we do at the library. Our study rooms were used 22 times, our meeting room was used twice, we added 65 books to our collection last month, and we added 20 DVDs. We had a really generous donation from a patron, and we were able to incorporate all of those into our collection. We are hiring, we lost our youth education coordinator, she resigned, I'm so sad, she was really great. So we are hiring, I'm looking for the next great youth education coordinator to come. It is a full-time position, 32 hours a week, we offer full benefits, health insurance. Other really great thing about this position is you get sick leave and annual leave with that 32 hours, it's $15 an hour. Please stop by the library, I've had a few people come in and I've met with them, I've walked them around the library, I've told them what our expectations are. And we have several full applications in, but we would like to get a nice, solid pool of applicants and start interviewing. So if you know anybody, send them my way. Thanks to Lisa Kegel, one of our newest board members, she has volunteered to help us with our ongoing book sale. So it looks beautiful, she added all of these new books to the book sale. So come by the library, it's a really great deal, see all the new books that we've put out there. And Lamar's not here, I'm so disappointed, because he kept asking me about those display units. We finally got them, they came in late last month, they're beautiful. We have two of them, even though there's three pictures up there, you can see the casters on the bottom, which is brilliant. You can see the casters on the bottom, which is brilliant. As we got our display unit, the same day that we got our banner exhibit for Witness to the Holocaust, and we immediately had to move our display to another part of the library. So they're beautiful and they highlight our new book collection really well for both our juvenile and our YA. I wanted to highlight this month, we order large print books every month as well. And I just wanted to highlight some of the large print books. We have many patrons that prefer to read the large print and we order from a special distributor for those. And I just wanted to show a few of the new ones that just came in. Pokemon League. We had seventy-six participants in the month of February. So they meet twice a month. They come the second and the fourth Thursday of the month. And this was just two of our young patrons dueling, but we had thirty-eight people there both times. It was amazing. And our Lego Showdown, that's once a month. We had twenty-three participants in February. Once again, it's a great Lego challenge where they're utilizing all sorts of different skillsets in order to complete, compete the challenge that we've set for them. I wanted to highlight again our launch pads. We've had a few patrons check them out and I've gotten really great feedback that they loved them and they were really beneficial. It's a literacy launch pad. You don't need wifi. You can check them out from the library. And we have basically five different reading levels that you can check them out and use them. We are doing something special this month. We're doing a cybersecurity bootcamp. I briefly mentioned it last month. It's going to be March twenty-first at five PM. The presenter, he come, he came up with that banner, security isn't something you buy, it's something you do. So we're really going to be talking about the things that you can do for yourself to keep yourself safe online. And remember to look out, look on chrl.org for our monthly calendar and events. Also Facebook, we are keeping everything updated on Facebook and Instagram. A few things I wanted to mention coming up in April, because I'm pretty excited about a few things looking forward to next month. I just want to have it on your radar is we are working with Thrive and I think I might want to talk to you later about the seniors. We're working with one of our patrons. She has a relationship with Thrive and we're going to bring some seniors in to read to some of the kids. She calls it Books and Blocks. We're going to be hosting that in April for a way for some of the citizens of the Thrive community to get out and go on their own little field trip and come and read to some of the, our younger patrons. And we also are going to be having a book reading. We have a local author who just got a book of poetry accepted for publication. And we are, she's coming in for the pre-release of her book of poetry and reading from that. So two exciting events to look forward to in April. Commissioners, thank you again. Executive Romley, thank you again for always allowing the library to present what we have. And if you have any questions for me.
Any questions? Okay. Good report.
Good job. Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you. Okay. Ms. Laura Best said she's got all that. So we'll put her down at number eleven on the. Come on in.
So we had Cloverleaf DPA this last, this last month and we hadn't gone to Cloverleaf DPA in, I think, three years. So we took ten kids and we had four that placed. We had Landon Abercrombie, who plays first in bicycle. He's a little BMX racer that's like really good and he's a really good kid, loves BMX. And we had Wyatt Gibson. His mom is a school teacher up there and he loves reptiles more than any person I've ever met and he plays second. And then we have Penelope Gilbreth. She plays second in horse. And then Calvin White did a fantastic presentation on zeppelins, which I always learn just as much as they do, I think, because they always pick these off-the-wall topics and I really enjoy it. Our middle school lesson, we talked about habitat carrying capacity and always relate that to farming country around here. And how many cows can you have on this many acres? And then we played the oh dear game that's been around in 4H since I was a kid. So they got a kick out of that. I made them wear like Christmas antlers. So they thought that was fun. Our homeschoolers kind of did a smaller version of what the middle schoolers did. They built bridges out of toothpicks and marshmallows. And they had a really good time doing that. And our next homeschool meeting will be on the eighth. We did a monthly craft night as usual and we made little heart turtles that they gave to their parents a little bit late as of Valentine's, since it was after Valentine's Day. And then for March, that one is going to be on the twenty-fourth and we're going to make a little shamrock man. We did our first annual bullseye challenge. It's a fundraiser, it was a fundraiser for our shotgun team and it was wildly successful. We were all kind of shocked and the support that this county gives for stuff like this is absolutely amazing. And we had a silent auction and our shotgun parents went out to the community and got all of this stuff donated. They got all of the concession stand donated. So we didn't put a penny into this fundraiser and I mean, they turned it around and they're, they were very successful. I was very proud of this fundraiser and it was a lot of fun. The kids had a blast. Our Dade County Fortage livestock team went to Perry this last week for the state show. And another first in a long time for us, we had three different species that got shown this time. We had the Hughes girls that showed goats. Gracie Hunter showed a heifer. And then little, I call him Little Robert McKeig. He showed some pigs. So they all did really great and we're, Sarah and I are really glad to see more species. And hopefully we'll maybe get some steers in there next time, but hopefully we can get everybody in there and all the species again. The upcoming Greater Gardener class is going to be on the fourteenth. It's going to be our very last one. It's going to conclude our twelve-month series and it will be on the fourteenth at six PM. And then the tri-state beekeepers will be on Monday, March twentieth at seven at the Ag Center. And then the tri-state cattleman's will be the third Thursday of every month, which is March twenty-first. It's going to be in Walker County this time. And if you want the mill, you just have to call the office to RSVP.
Any questions? Sound like y'all been really busy, you know?
Did you drive the new van to?
Yes, I drove the van to Cloverleaf DPA and I'm driving it tomorrow to Rock Eagle for junior, senior DPA.
How many you got in shotgun now? I know there was a lot this year.
We have twenty-three. We have twenty-three shooters. Yeah. So when they opened it up for sixth grade, yeah. Now we have like, and I'm, you know, I'm glad that they opened it up, but sixth grade can be kind of hard with a shotgun. You have to be really cautious with them because some of them are so little, they're just like trying to haul it up there and then you're like, whoa, whoa. It's been fun. It's been a learning experience and yeah, it's, they're, I'm glad that we have that many kids. And I really think that next year we'll have more. So.
Appreciate you. Okay. Okay. Move down to Ms. Sandy White. She's there. President of our lights for Dade, Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, y'all. We've got some Small Business Development Center webinars coming up. You can see five there. Some are repeats, but it's always good to make these available. So anybody online is more than welcome to click on the, on the, click here and, and get that. Or you can always call us at the chamber and we'll be happy to give you that information. Next, I had a, we had a phenomenal, phenomenal success with the virtual Valentines. We actually had a hundred, not just ninety-nine, community citizens that decided to give a Valentine to their favorite business and over seventy businesses were recognized. And it was really neat seeing their, their smiles when they got the Valentine. So it was a good. And then we promoted that on our Facebook page. So it was a good way to get a little exposure for the businesses. And it was a fun opportunity to tell them how much we appreciate them. So we were really happy about that. We too are looking for a Welcome Center manager. And so if anybody is interested, we have more information on our website as well as our Facebook page. We are, we have interviewed some, but we're still looking. So anybody that knows anybody, send them our way. Our numbers for this month, we had five residents come into Welcome Center, eighteen visitors and thirteen calls. And some of the community events coming up, the, this weekend is the gun show at the post one oh six American Legion. And then also today, starting today through the twentieth of April, there is a Health and Happiness eight-week course, which is free at the Community Life Center. Also on March eighteenth is the Dade County Lions Club St. Patrick's Day Run, five K and ten K. If you want more information, contact Ronnie Cartwright on that. And then we're going to be putting these out in different places around the community. But if a visitor is coming to the community and wants information on where to eat, where to sleep, where to shop and hiking information, we now have some QR codes. We'll put these out at locations. I was just talking to Mr. Faircliff about putting them, putting one up at the Groovy Nomad. We'll have these available and it's also available in the Welcome Center. They can just click on the QR code and it'll be on their phone. So they have a listing of what's available. These are two additional ads that we're doing. The two-page spread is going in the Georgia Great Places. And that again is got a QR code that will give more information about the tourist attractions and events here. And then the other one is a Georgia Outdoor Guide that is mainly for hiking, biking, that kind of thing. It also will, not only will have our ad, but will also list all the hiking and biking and trails that horses can go on in our county. So anyway, so that's what my, my report is. If you have any questions. Oh, one other thing that's not on here, we are working with the high school on a career fair that's coming up. We just are solidifying details and that will be April nineteenth. There'll be more information out about that. And also on March thirtieth, Alex Case will be speaking at a lunch and learn that we'll be having concerning preparing for the storm, storm season coming up for businesses. So we're, we'll get more information out of that to the local businesses in really probably next week. So.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Good report. Thank you. Mr. Townsend.
Donna Street was here. She was on edge. I can tell. She would like to say a word.
I appreciate y'all for the library and all the other things, but tonight I'm going to, I'm going to speak as your representative of the historic preservation. We had our meeting last month and after we had the meeting, we toured the courthouse, which I hadn't done in quite a little while. And happy to say the plumbing is stuck in and we got new bathrooms headed in, in the courthouse. The first floor, the main floor of the courthouse never had any bathrooms. You know, they were all down in the basement, which we've taken up that space for the, for the elevator and are up on the second floor. So we've got a family, family-style bathroom that's going to be where the old sheriff's office was, according to the blueprints, which is the smallest room on the first floor. And, and then we've got, we managed to get another bathroom under the stairs. So that's a good thing. We were, we were toured through the building by a representative of Levins Construction, who is Cole Atkins, the son of Kathy and Terry Atkins. One of their employees. Day three of your historic preservation members met with Elaine and Ann Gray. And Ann used to be in charge of Cornerstone in Chattanooga. Cornerstone was the historic preservation arm that changed its name since she's retired. But she is going to do some work with us, we hope, on our next piece of our survey that we wrote the grant for. And possibly we were going to, we're going to try to get some people trained to be able to do that locally. That was a good meeting. We had, had a little, little coffee and things in our oldest building in Trenton, in what I call the Odd Fellas Building, but the coffee shop. Now let's switch to the Historical Society. We've got a couple of things coming for the Historical Society that we would like people to know about and be involved in. March the twenty-eighth, that is a Tuesday evening at the library from five to seven, we're going to do something we haven't done since the pandemic started. And that's have a genealogy workshop. If you need to start using, doing your genealogy, there'll be some of us there to help you. We've had all kinds of interesting things happen during our genealogy sessions. When we first started, there was a pair of sisters and I'm not going to name their name, but they, they were one of those families that had a mother who was, was basically given in adoption during the war in England. And they've hunted for their relatives and they've been able to find them in the United States. So it's, it's, it's kind of rewarding. And the other thing, if, if you're related to the forester, anybody that's got forester ancestry, on April the twenty-ninth, instead of doing a hike, we're going to the forester home on, in Head River. And you'll be able to walk around in your ancestral home to see what Peter Forester and Callender Forester and all those foresters that moved back and forth from San, Lookout Mountain to Cloverdale, back and forth. Steve Forester is doing the legwork and he is building a list of people that are alive right now that are related. He's up to two hundred, or he was last week. So there are tons and tons of foresters. And so you foresters, come out and say your ancestral home. We got more things happening. We got some more tours going, but, but we'll talk about them later. Does anybody have a question?
Any questions? Good report. Good report. All right. Mr. Townsend, if you would give us our monthly financial report.
All right. As of February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, the general fund had a balance of two million, six hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars. The, we had a one point four million on hand as far as the investments. Federal Asset Fund, US Treasury has a balance of zero. Share Special Fund, a balance of seven thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars. Drug Abuse Education Fund, four thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars. Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars. Victim Assistance Fund, two thousand, six hundred ninety-nine dollars. Jail Fund, three thousand, seventy-two dollars. Federal Asset Fund Department of Justice, zero. American Rescue Plan balance remains at one million, eight hundred eighty-four thousand, two hundred eleven dollars. Accommodations Tax has a balance of two hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollars. Employee Flexible Spending Account, sixteen thousand, nine hundred sixty-nine dollars. And Payroll Account, a balance of seventy-three thousand, nine hundred seventy-three dollars. The two thousand fifteen SPOS remains, has a balance remaining of one hundred, three thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars. And the two thousand twenty-one SPOS has a balance of, the projects account of twenty-six thousand, fourteen dollars. And the SPOS proceeds account, one million, eight hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred ninety-three dollars. Looking at the next report, you'll see our income statement. And this is as of January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And for the month, we, for the month of January, we came in at eight hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred nine dollars. We had budgeted eight hundred nine thousand, five oh eight. So we were in excess of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. Year-to-date budget, we've spent, I'm sorry, we brought in revenue-wise, nine million, five hundred sixty-eight thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars. And we had anticipated bringing in at this point, nine million, twenty, two hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred nine dollars. So again, in excess of three hundred and five thousand, eight hundred sixty-one dollars. Looking at the expenses on the, as of January thirty-first, we had spent one million, thirty-six thousand, four hundred eighty dollars. Had budgeted one million, twenty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars. So we were over budgeted seven thousand, eighty-eight dollars for the month. Year-to-date, we expensed seven million, nine hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars. Had budgeted eight million, ninety-six thousand, three hundred forty-eight dollars. So we were under budget of a hundred fifteen thousand, eighty-five dollars. Budget attained so far through December, January thirty-first should be at fifty-eight point three-three percent. Revenues attained were at seventy-one point eight-six percent and expenses were attained at fifty-eight point eight-four percent. Looking at local option sales tax for the month of February, that's representative of monies that would have been deposited or spent by merchants, citizens or whomever at the merchant level back in December. or spent by merchants, citizens or whomever at the merchant level back in December. And the department revenue submitted, remitted $212,819.06 for the local option sales tax. And our special purpose local option sales tax, it was $265,498.06. I wanted to let you, before we go on past that screen, normally we don't look at this, but if you look way back at 2016, you'll see in the yellow, we collected for a 12-month period, I just want to point that out, you know, about $1.9 million. Now, we did go down a little bit in 2017, but then '18, $2.35 million, $2.65 million, '19. And then over in '20, $2.5 million, $2.9 million in '21. And then this past year, we've collected $3.5 million. That's huge. I mean, that's almost double what it was just a few years ago. So anyway, just want to point that out. We're doing fairly well this year so far with just two months in the same time period. Looking at 2021 SPOS, you see the report there for the tracking worksheet. So far, we spent of this SPOS, $1,993,385. And so we've still got a ways to go there. But and then the little, actually no expenses spent from the fire departments as far as the new SPOS, I don't believe. But the old SPOS is what's left and that is for the fire departments. And we still have around $90,000 left there. So I'm sure Rodney is looking at me at this very moment, getting ready next month for some expenses. We're going to try to get that spent. And let's see here, as far as the tax commissioner goes, we have $4,678,809 collected so far. And that is from July 1st, 2022 through January 31st, 2023 at 85.14%. Angie does have a new software that's installed. So for the first time in their history, they have checks that are typed or printed. They've been handwriting checks for 200 years or whatever. So I'm very proud of them for finally moving into the 20th and 21st century. So excited about that. Also, some news to note today that we received. Our auditor, audit firm Henderson-Huterson-McColla, we've been, our project manager or manager over our governmental accounting firm for ours in Day County has been Alicia Jewell, but she has moved on to greener pasture. So we will be getting a new person. I don't know who that is yet. What was his name? Weston something, we forgot. But anyway, but anyway, we'll be introducing a new person soon. Maybe they'll come down and greet us very soon about that. But just want to let you know about that. That concludes the report.
Any questions, comments or corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial statement issued by Mr. Townsend. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve is read.
Okay, now I have a second.
Second.
Okay, motion, second call, vote. Richard Hartline?
Yes.
Galv?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And chair vote, yes. Motion carries. Robin, you got anything tonight? Any legal issues or anything you need to discuss or bring before us? Okay, unfinished business, any of that? Okay, all right. Reading of the minutes of our last monthly meeting, or any special call meetings will not be required since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance. The minutes are public record and available for view in our county commission office. The minutes are included in our consent agenda and will be considered for approval under new business. This time, Mr. Townsend, would you go with the consent agenda and then we will entertain a motion?
Okay, we have on the consent agenda tonight, the approval of the agenda as presented, approval of previous meeting minutes, the review of the personal status report, a proclamation, commendation for the Honorable Senator Jeff Mullis, proclamation for Intellectual Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month for March of 2023, proclamation for Day County Lions Club Savior Vision Month, March 2023, proclamation Sexual Assault Awareness Month, March 2023, and proclamation Social Work Breaks Barriers, Social Worker Month, March 2023. As far as the, there was no SPOS and ARPA expenditures included, the upgrades for Day County IT, for the Day County Sheriff's Office Video Evidence Server and Software, which is WatchGuard Server Upgrade, purchased from Lightfoot Technologies, for a total of $14,096.10. The Resolution R-15-23, which is to abandon Owen B. Filler Road as part of Day County's road system. Resolution R-16-23, Georgia Department of Transportation Grant, Section 5311, Public Transit Procurement Policy Update, and Resolution R-17-23, Adjustment of the Scale House Rates.
Okay. Any questions, corrections? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
No, second.
Okay, call the vote. Ms. Hartline?
Yes.
Galv?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And chair vote, yes. Motion carries. Don't have an executive session tonight. Do y'all want to add anything to the meeting before we adjourn?
I'll just say that for everybody's information, you know this, that I will not be here in the March meeting. I'll be in, Lord willing, the ocean don't rise, I will be in Romania for about three weeks.
That's April.
Yeah, and April, I will be here for the March, but not that broad, that's right.
Audrey?
Just a question, Ted. Is there any update about the bridge on 136 East?
Yep.
In the spring of this year, then we're supposed to begin?
I gave an update last week and so for this weekend, this month, last month, it costs a lot. Honestly, that's been a really hot topic. I mean, because they've actually came in and changed the whole ballgame. I mean, they've actually, the accelerated bridge is no longer in their future. It's going to be shut down for possibly a year to a year and a half, except they're going to build a bridge beside that one temporarily. And it's just, you know, and so the traffic will keep flowing. But there'll be like a red light there to control. It won't be like a full-width bridge, but it'll be enough to carry the traffic. So they chose to do that rather than accelerated bridge and shut it down for 15, 20 days. So that right now, but this is not going to happen. Construction probably won't start on it until probably '25, end of '24.
That's when the bids let out.
Yeah, the bids, yeah.
So it's moved to '25?
That's when the bids, yeah. Well, he told me, I talked to Grant, he said actually the bids probably will go out right at the end, maybe December, January of '24, but actually '25. Then, you know, there's a process goes through. So you may not see any ground broken until the end or in '26, you know? So, because it is, it's going to be a major, you know, hit for people. And it may change between now and then. I mean, really, they, you know, we may have, you know, who knows? But, okay, anything else? All right, appreciate everyone being here tonight. And I know it's, you know, it's bad outside, rainy, but keep your eyes on the weather tomorrow, you know? I know we've had some false alarms, but, you know, but this, you know, this, like Alex said, this is unusually starting early for us to be even talking about this. And so, you know, just keep an eye on it. We appreciate everyone being here. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
Call the vote. Ms. Hartline?
Yes.
Galv?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Chair vote, yes. And meeting is adjourned. Thank you.